Oh, not here, man.
Do you want the latest electrical news?
Hey, well, you know, I'm fine with them. Excuse me, can't complain because they ain't gonna do no good. No, not really. To be totally honest with you, not really at all. It was like a, thank you, it was like a kind of a go-go afternoon because I thought we had a meeting at five today, but we got all that done last week. And, because I was in Lena, way out in the sticks, but then I had to go out in the sticks in Orangeville, so. Yeah, it was kind of like feet don't fail me now because I didn't get a chance to get out to shop till late. And then I got to the first job and the customer was like, you know, he says, I remember when I had been there many years ago, he says, "Don't you remember being here? You put a windshield on that for me a long time ago." I looked at the truck and I'm like, "Yeah." I kind of, yeah, I did, really, I did. Everywhere I go, he go, everywhere I go, he go. Oh, golly, talk me to death. So, but, we got it done, and I went to the next one. And I was really going at it, and I said, "I better go, Peters, if we gotta find a clock, baby." Next thing you know. And that was at 4:30, and he says, "No," and I'm like, "Oh, cool." I was up in Orangeville. Preview, very, it's way out there, and I was like, "At least I got a half an hour to get back, I can't do that." So, but I was like, "Oh, don't have to rush around," so. Got to the shop and got everything else ready for tomorrow, and yeah, here we are, rocking and rolling. I want to see a lot of, hear a lot of staff. Only reason.
Yeah, if it's a security pickup in my room, I'm not sure if it'll work.
It's got to be down there, I can't speak for anybody here, but they'll figure it out eventually.
Only reason I'm not saying, when I, you know what I'm saying. When each member goes unmuted.
That's my suspicion here.
We'll get, we'll get, seriously. Yeah, we'll get together.
We usually just turn the computer around, not the whole podium. So, they can still use the podium, but flip the laptop. There you go. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
That works. The camera for the computers down here, it's not up here, so.
Kurt usually just flips it all the way over.
When I did that, I lost, I did that, and it lost.
Maybe you bumped a key.
Disconnected from the projector that time.
There you go.
All right, call it a day. I did see others were on earlier, it's just the view is bad.
Eric, can you see if everybody's on?
Um, they're popping on now, so far Sally and.
Okay, I think they just weren't. I saw Peter was on.
Okay. Okay, so it's still me? Yeah, it's still, uh, Busker and Horniman.
I saw Busker was signed in earlier.
Okay, well, good evening. I'd like to welcome Kalea and Adam, if you could please go to the microphone and just take a moment to introduce yourselves, and then if you could give the invocation, we'd appreciate that.
Yeah, my name is Kalea Johnsey, and this is my fiance.
I'm Adam Dyes.
And we go to City First Church. Jesus, we just thank you so much for this night, God, we thank you so much for the city of Freeport, God, we thank you for each and every individual here, Lord, God, we just pray for your wisdom and your discernment, God, we pray for discernment in each of us, God, for us to know exactly how to make decisions, Jesus, and the wisdom that you give, God, we thank you, Lord, that you have all authority and power, God, and that we can call upon your name, and we just pray for your will to be done, your kingdom come here as it is in heaven in Freeport, God, we thank you, Lord, that, like I said, you have all authority, God, you have all, all power, Lord, and we love you, Lord, and we thank you, Jesus, that you reign over it all.
And God, I just pray that you would just bring wisdom to the city council members, God, that as they just make decisions to best provide for Freeport, God, whether it's big or little, God, they would just look to you for wisdom and just peace in that situation and in that decision, God, and in your name, amen.
Thank you very much. So, now we'll officially call this meeting to order, Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Attending tonight in person, Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderperson's in person would be Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
And Mysick.
Here.
Attending via teleconference, did Alderperson Borneman show up?
Uh, President.
Oh, okay. McLanathan.
President.
Busker. Brasshaw. Burberry. Manager Bukas is in person?
Present.
Directors Boyer. Summers. I'm sorry, Eric, your deputy IT director, Eric Stamberg. And attending remotely, Director Richter.
President.
Huffeins. We'll go back to her, Hines. Liggett.
President.
And probably not Janson, Director Huffeins, one more time, Ashley, can you hear us? Okay, Clerk Anderson is present in person, and Attorney Zito. Did I miss any department heads or anyone?
All right, thank you. If you could please stand and join us for the pledge allegiance led by Alderman Burberry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one is the approval of the agenda, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Ross, seconded by Alderman Mysick. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role for the approval of the agenda?
Burberry.
Yes.
Borneman. Let's see. Yes, we did hear from him, sorry, McLanathan. Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Madam Clerk, Patrick is logging back in, he was having an issue.
Brasshaw. And Mysick.
Aye.
The agenda passes seven to zero.
Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of November 2nd, 2020, is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Mysick, Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Burberry. Borneman.
Aye.
McLanathan. Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw. And Mysick.
Aye.
Okay, next is public comments, we have two individuals that are signed in. Raven Eichmeyer, you have three minutes? You didn't know? And Akia Sanders, did you want to speak? No? Okay, thank you, ladies. We have no one else that's signed in, and so we'll move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and acted as one motion unless a member of the council would like to have something separated for discussion. Is there any such request? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of approving and placing on file the foreign fire insurance board minutes from August 6th, 2020, the historic preservation minutes from August 18th, the zoning board of appeals minutes from September 3rd, the planning commission minutes from September 10th, the board of fire and police commission minutes from September 22nd, and building, building permit reports for October 2020. Also, B is approving and placing, approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $807,972.45, as well as the approval of the payroll for pay period ending November 7th, 2020, in the total of $555,736.07. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Mysick, seconded by Alderman Ross, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role for the approving the consent agenda?
Burberry. Borneman. McLanathan. Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker. Brasshaw. Mysick.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
I don't know if it's possible to somehow move that microphone because we're not, no one's going to be able to hear them when they have questions.
Yeah, maybe when they're all muted except for.
Yeah, so if, so if everyone on the listening is muted except for when they're speaking, that would probably help the feedback. Okay, so then we will move on to item number five, which is the second reading of ordinance 2020-50, Madam Clerk, would you please read this?
Ordnance approving special use permit for 104 to 108 West Spring Street.
Thank you, Director Hines.
Hi, everyone. So, we have gone over the special use permit for 104 to 108 West Spring Street about a month ago, maybe a little bit more than that, and at that time, we had some concerns, we didn't have a definition of meeting halls in our zoning code, and we didn't have any regulations in place to, to be able to regulate meeting halls where alcohol was involved, and we've previously dealt with incidences that, you know, were not favorable in those senses. And so now, you know, we have, we have reviewed regulations and have the council let approve that for meeting halls and bring your own bottle facilities, which covers our concerns regarding the use of meeting halls. And the zoning board of appeals and the planning commission also reviewed and approved a definition of zoning, or of meeting halls for our zoning code to align with the, with the meeting hall business regulation. And so at this time, based on these updates that we've made, the staff does recommend the approval of the special use for meeting halls, as our original concerns are now subsided given these additional regulations that are in place. And then the zoning board of appeals went back and reviewed the special use application, and they, they did reinstate their, their original approval or recommendation for approval at that meeting on, on November 5th. There was, for this, and the planning commission also, we, the planning commission did not re-review the, the application, but the planning commission did recommend approval at their original, the time that they originally reviewed this. So, I can answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Director Hines, is there discussion, council?
Question, please.
Alderman Burberry.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Director Hines, it reads, one of the things which presented here, it talks about building facility room or portion thereof, my question has to deal with, let's just cover outdoor areas. You know, there's a lot of areas around town that have an outdoor access. Would that, would that be covered, or is that just included in part of the definition of a meeting room, meeting hall?
Um, so I, I believe at this facility specifically, there is no outdoor area that's included in it, if they were to apply for a, a parklet or something, that would be something completely separate from the special use application. But this, the special use would cover the, the use of meeting hall within the facility.
Strictly indoors?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or concerns, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the role in the approval of ordinance 2020-50?
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Mysick.
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number six is the first reading of ordinance 2020-61, Madam Clerk, would you please read this?
Ordnance amending chapter 806 alcoholic liquor sales to include a downtown festival district.
Thank you, Manager Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. This, this item has been discussed a, a number of times at the community of the whole meeting. I think it's, it meets the latest revisions that were asked at the last meeting. The times of operation for the district would be not, cannot start before 11:00 a.m. and has to conclude by 11:00 p.m. And, and the first year that we're proposing the downtown festival district, there will only be six scheduled events in the calendar year. The festival rules have to be posted on those establishments that are going to participate, and the participants have to be wearing a wristband that will be furnished by the city to the various establishments that will be participating in this as well. The final authority as far as approving or disapproving the applications is up to the liquor commissioner, and, and in case there is a declaration of emergency to end the downtown festival district because of some public health or safety reason, that's also, that authority is also given to the liquor commissioner as well. I'm open to any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you, Madam. I have a question, I'm not sure if this was in writing or if it's just something that's understood. My question is this, how will that area be curtained off so that drinking pedestrians are not walking outside of the designated areas with open containers?
I, I believe the only thing that's going to separate that is a, a map at each establishment, when they, when the festival is going on, there'll be specific directions and maps on where you can and cannot go with the, the alcohol in those spots.
Is there other questions? Alderman Brasshaw, I believe the conversation that's connected to that was how PD put in the double fining to really have some teeth to staying within the designated area.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you. I'm not trying to put a damper on this downtown festival district as presented, my question is just, I, I worry about the safety of people and the fact that people may not be paying attention and wandering outside those areas. I know we've had limitations before when we've had restaurants serving alcohol within a curtained area outside of their business, and this is a supposedly designated area in the downtown. I'm just wondering how we will contain those citizens or how they will know exactly not to be wandering off outside of that area, I was just wondering if there's a way to mark those parameters. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman Parker.
Do the motion move this forward?
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross to move ordinance 2020-61 onto the next regular. ordinance 2020-61 onto the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Item number seven is the first reading of ordinance 2020-62. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Ordinance approving special use permit for accessory building on Marvin Lane.
Thank you. Director Hines?
Thank you. So we received a special use application from Fox Palo LLC to build an accessory building on the southeast parcel of Marvin Lane. This parcel is actually three separate lots, as you could see in the staff memo, and it's just going to be on the southeast portion of it. So the accessory building requires a special use permit where there are no principal buildings, that there is no principal building existing on any of these lots. The proposed project is to erect a 20 by 32-foot structure, or a storage shed on the property for the purposes of storage, for maintenance equipment for Fox Palo LLC. Just this one third of the parcels is 4.34 acres large. So the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, and welfare. The special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate area. The establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the adjacent properties. The proposed use is similar to nearby properties, so the petitioner's parcel is Zoned R3, as are most of the neighboring properties within that neighborhood. There is, that one parcel is a budding, a great park as well, which is Zoned A1 Agricultural. The property values are not likely to diminish by the proposed use. The proposed accessory building will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property areas, nor is it likely to diminish the value of the neighboring properties, and the building will be used to maintain the Fox Palo properties. The proposed use may endanger the, or may not endanger the public health, safety, and welfare of the city, but it's not likely to endanger the city or the welfare of the public, that it will be used to store equipment for maintaining the neighboring properties. The proposed accessory structure is not likely to place hardship on the public or neighboring properties. The subject property is well suited for the proposed use. Just this one parcel is 4.34 acres, and the proposed structure is 20 by 32 feet, or only .015 acres. The lot coverage of the accessory structure is significantly lower than the maximum lot coverage of 1.52 acres, which is no more than 35% of that lot area. And the accessory structure is mostly hidden by vegetation, and trees and bushes and such. The length of the time that the subject property in question has been vacant, it's been vacant for at least 50 years. Nearby residences have been developed over the last 20. The proposed amendment is consistent with the 2020 comprehensive plan. The proposed accessory building is an investment in the existing Fox Palo properties. The proposed amendment will not necessarily benefit the needs of the community, but it will benefit the neighborhood, and that the onsite storage will help keep the subdivision well maintained. At this time, staff has no concerns with the proposal for the special use accessory building and recommends approval. The zoning board held a public hearing for the special use application November 5th, and they voted three to zero with one abstention to recommend approval of the accessory building. It's noted, I believe that due to the three to zero vote, we may need a six-person approval by council for this special use application. I just wanted to note that. And Planning Commission also, after discussing the Fox Palo special use application, they did vote to recommend approval.
Thank you, Director Hines.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank you for the pictures provided in our packets that show the secluded area, and we can see from those pictures that the building will be mostly hidden from view. And so I am actually in favor of this, if it will improve the neighborhood for that one storage building. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Yes, Director Hines, are all the neighbors, are there any concerns from the neighbors out there?
I did not receive any concerns from anyone. Someone from the Park District, they did ask where it was going to be sitting, but they were just wondering where the building was going to be placed. They didn't have any concerns or any additional questions.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Borneman.
Alderman Borneman.
Thank you. I had just two questions with regards to where it's going to be located inside that parcel. Did they provide you with an answer?
So if you look at the staff report, there's, it's kind of, it's a small image, but there's a star on the southeast lot there, so it's sort of not quite centered, a little bit north is probably the center of that parcel, but you can access that where that's going to be right from the road. You can kind of, in the images as well, you can kind of see there's an opening between the trees.
Okay, and then my other question was, and it sounds like there were no objections at the public hearing?
No, there were no objections at the public hearing. We did have it have virtual as well, and I didn't receive any comments beforehand, or via email or anything.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to move this forward.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion made by Alderman Borneman, seconded by Alderman Brashaw to move ordinance 2020-62 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Is there anything further, counsel? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number eight, which is the first reading of ordinance 2020-63. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Ordinance approving variance permit for 1858 Southwest Avenue.
Thank you. Director Hines?
Thank you. So we received a variance application from David Artman. He's the owner of Muddy Paws for 1858 Southwest Avenue, at the Meadow Shopping Center. The applicant requested the variance from the B3 zoning district to allow a dog and cat grooming facility and dog daycare with an outdoor bathroom area. So the applicant did speak with staff in late August, arriving his business plans. At that time, we didn't think it was necessary to go through the variance process based on our understanding, but we did, and he moved in at that point. After learning a little bit more about the business, we did decide that we would prefer him to go through this process based on our zoning code. Currently, pet shops or animal hospitals were conducted wholly within enclosed buildings, are permitted use in B3 zoning, but it doesn't explicitly allow for dog daycares or grooming facilities. So the unit 1858 Southwest Avenue is two units combined. It's located at Meadow Shopping Center. The two units are roughly 5,000 square feet in size. The grooming center occupies the smaller of the two units, and the dog daycare occupies the larger portion. The two units are connected and accessible from different points of entry at Meadow's Mall. And the proposed bathroom area, it would be a fenced-in area 12 by 20 feet wide and six feet tall, located at the rear of the Meadow Shopping Center. The outdoor area will be used to relieve the dogs, and the dogs would not be allowed to free roam in this space. The applicant does not plan to add this space immediately, and staff, including myself, the building inspector, and the fire chief have been, we met with the applicant at the space, and we're working with them to ensure that they're complying with any relevant City of Freeport codes. And the fenced-in area would require a fence permit application, as required by Chapter 1270 of the codified ordinances. But the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code. Pet shops and animal hospitals are permitted in B3, although the codified ordinances do not define either dog daycare or grooming facilities, which are more modern services offered at pet shops. Strict enforcement of the zoning code would result in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions. The business would not be able to operate without granting of this variance at this location. As previously stated, dog daycare and grooming are more modern services offered at pet shops, and the outdoor bathroom area will help keep the facility clean. The property cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the zoning code. The location was vacant for nine months before the applicant moved in, and the business has expanded from garage to storefront due to an increase in customer base, need for additional services. The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. There's no definition of the terms of pet shop, animal grooming, or dog daycare facilities within the City of Freeport code. Our modern, and modern pet shops commonly include grooming or dog daycare services. The business would not be able to operate under our current code. The variance, if granted, may not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and may not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property. But the use may alter, or may not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the property if animals and animal waste are properly handled and disposed of, so precautions must be taken to avoid dangerous dogs on site. An applicant has indicated that dogs must pass a test before being admitted to the daycare. The unit was vacant for nine months, and the tenant is bringing additional foot traffic to the shopping center. The proposed use is similar to some nearby properties. So the Meadow Shopping Center is on B3 and hosts a variety of businesses, spas, gyms, retail office space. The property is surrounded by B3 parcels to the east, B2-1 to the north, and residential to the northwest and west. The proposed use of grooming facility and dog daycare, too, include not during bathroom area, not fundamentally similar to neighboring properties, but similar in that they offer some service and retail goods. The property values are not likely to diminish by the proposed use. The proposed use is not likely to diminish the neighboring property values. It would bring additional foot traffic to the shopping center and neighboring businesses. The proposed use may endanger the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. The proposed use may be detrimental to the public safety and welfare of the city of animals and animal waste are not properly handled and disposed of, or proper precautions are not taken to avoid dangerous dogs entering the apartment. The applicant has indicated that precautions are taken, as I said before. The relative scene to the public compared to the hardship imposed on the applicant. The proposed use will be located in a space at the Meadow's Mall that has only one adjoining wall to another tenant. The wall is supposedly fireproof and soundproof, and there are two entryways that customers can quickly enter the space instead of waiting in the common area. The subject property is well suited for the proposed use at over 5,000 square feet in The property was vacant for nine months before the business moved in, and the proposed use is consistent with the 2020 comprehensive plan dated September 21, 2020. It encourages entrepreneurship within the community, which is consistent with a local business expanding from their home to a commercial space. The proposed amendment will benefit the needs of the community. The business has been open for three years and has established clientele, enough clientele to expand their business. So based on these, based on these considerations, the staff would recommend the approval of the grooming and dog daycare facility under the condition that the property is maintained in accordance with the City of Freeport codified ordinances, and we would recommend to approve the outdoor bathroom area contingent on the submission and approval of a fence permit application. The zoning Board of Appeals had the public hearing for this November 5th, and they also recommended approval based on the considerations presented today, and after discussion at the Planning Commission, they also recommended approval. If I can answer any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Misick.
Director Hines, thanks for walking us through this. In the LaSalle Sinclair Factors, number three, proposed use may endanger public health, safety, welfare of the city. You had mentioned about if animal waste was not properly handled or disposed of, or if precautions were not taken to avoid dangerous dogs. In your discussion with the owner, do you feel that all steps are being taken to minimize the danger to public health, safety, welfare?
I do, and I think that I wanted to include that in there, sort of, as a precaution for us, because, you know, there's always a possibility that a dog could be dangerous if, you know, if you're not familiar with them. But it did, the applicant did make it clear that they have a vetting process where they'll slowly introduce the dog to the others to see if they play well, or if they're, you know, if they're going to be dangerous or not. And so they do have a process that they go through to make sure that they don't have any dangerous animals on site. And in terms of cleaning up of animal waste, I think that is the purpose, the ultimate purpose of the outdoor bathroom area. And we do have, our current codified ordinance has rules in place and regulations in place that if they were to not take care of the animal waste on the property, if it started becoming a massive problem, that we could, you know, issue citations or things like that.
Follow-up?
Sure.
That was my concern as well, is how the city can handle that if the waste wasn't properly being handled, and if we did run into situations where there were dangerous dogs. So it sounds like this appears to be a reasonable level of risk, given that the owner is looking and has processes in place in how to handle that. It sounds like this was a new, a new concept to have the, like, the rest or outdoor area for the dogs. So this is something I think needs to be obviously followed up and monitored if this is going through, just to make sure that the neighbors are okay with that, and it's not producing any unsightly, I guess, or smells, perhaps. That would be my only concern. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Director Hines, was there a public hearing? Did I miss something?
Yes, there was. So the public hearing, it was on the same date as the previous special use that was presented, so it was November 5th, and there was no one present to object the variance application, and we didn't receive any communication beforehand either. And at the public hearing, that's when the zoning Board of Appeals did vote to recommend approval.
Thank you, Director Hines. With that said, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move this forward.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Parker. And normally, that's sufficient for Aldermen to be able to move forward into second reading. However, this one gives us a little bit of a difference, because there was a formal vote that requires in the zoning Board of Appeals to have at least four votes for approval. They only had three with one abstention, so that pushes the council to a different level of having to actually take a vote, with a minimum of six Aldermen agreeing to move this forward, since it puts us in a little different light. So unless there is any further questions, I'll ask Madam Clerk to please take the role to be able to move ordinance 2020-63 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting.
So we're not voting for approval, we're just voting to move it forward? Do we need to do that?
I don't think you need to do that. You would need a three, a two-thirds supermajority vote for final adoption under... under our Code of Ordinances, but not just to move it forward to second reading. Because even on the previous matter number seven, they only had a three, 301 abstention vote on that one. And that one will need to have a two-thirds vote to approve ultimately.
So both, both will need it then?
Right, but only for final approval.
Okay, so they don't have to, in order, Randy, are you, Director, Manager Bukas, are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, then we'll take that at face value and move on to the next item number nine, which is the first reading of ordinance 202064. Madam Clerk, would you please read this?
Appropriation ordinance fiscal year 2021, January 1 to December 31, 2021, for the City of Freeport.
Manager Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's fiscal year 2021 budget has been reviewed by the Finance Committee of the whole on several occasions now. The major funds are the General Fund at $20,334,915, the Water Fund at $5,547,084, the Sanitary Sewer Fund at $5,494, and, excuse me, $5,494,400, and the Library Fund at $1,113,830. It's staff's recommendation that the city council adopt ordinance 2020-64, the appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2021.
Mayor.
Alderman Borneman.
Thank you. Manager Bukas, this is something that I touched on at the end of our last financial committee meeting, but I'm, I wasn't, I was towards the end there. I just wanted to emphasize and ask to find ways to provide some financial relief to bar and restaurant owners, specifically through my conversations with other members of the council, specifically Mr. McClanahan. And we're looking, I'm hoping you could present to us some options. One would be what it would look like for reduction in liquor license fees for the year 2021. The reasoning being, right now, we have businesses who are paying full price for a liquor license, but at the same time are being asked not to use it in the way that they are anticipating or expected to be able to use it when they pay it. So I was suggesting like a reduction in the fees by half for that, for the upcoming year. I was wondering if by the next meeting, that's something you could present to us. And I also would be open to any suggestions you may have about ways to help these businesses, who I think are taking the brunt of the shutdowns and, you know, the totality of what we've been through. So if I need a motion, I will make a motion to have this appropriations budget moved forward, but with the caveat that it includes an option where liquor license fees are reduced.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman McClanahan.
Thank you. And ultimately, I'll join in a motion to move it forward. Just for further clarification, I'm not, from my, you know, while we're talking with Alderman Borneman, I'm not looking for all, like, you know, Class A licenses or things of that nature, but what would it look like running down our breakdown for if we were talking just bars and restaurants, for instance? You know, gas stations that have a liquor license and a gaming license, I don't think are being impacted in the manner that was being presented by Alderman Borneman. So when we're looking at it, it'd be targeted towards just bars and restaurants for purposes of looking at our figures, not just all liquor licenses that are outstanding in the City of Freeport. Alderman Borneman, was that your understanding?
That's right. I appreciate your clarification there. It was specific to the actual bars and restaurants, indoor dining type places.
Alderman McClanahan, did you, Alderman McClanahan, did you put a second on that or not?
Yeah, I'll put a second on it.
Was there?
Further follow up?
Yes, please.
Just in summary, though, we've had many finance committee of the whole meetings where we've gone through each portion of the budget here, line item by line item. Our last meeting included the regular committee of the whole also, but it ended up being like a four and a half hour meeting. So we've gone through and done the work, and I appreciate the work that the departments have done. I appreciate the work that Manager Bukas has done in regards to this and working with council members in conjunction with it and making changes as we go throughout the process here. It's, regardless of what happens, when we review those additional numbers, we're going to be coming out of this process with a balanced budget that doesn't increase taxes and fees, at least the tax rate's the same for the, as we see later on here. We're looking at, leaving the tax rate the same for the City of Freeport. So if your house doesn't appreciate in value as assessed by the township assessor, you're not going to see an increase in the city portion of your taxes. And given all the difficulties that we've seen, both with COVID, but also the way that the city's adapted to it, and make some significant investments, both in public safety, not only in the number of personnel and the type of personnel in the police departments, but also in regards to spots, or shot spotter technology, and also the significant additional investments in our infrastructure, particularly also in regards to what we're doing for additional repairs on roads. So I think it balances the priorities of the council administration pretty well here. It is a budget that will serve us well over the year moving forward.
Any other discussion on this ordinance, council? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Borneman, seconded by Alderman McClanahan to move ordinance 202064 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting adding a few figures for a reduction to be able to be discussed. Moving on to item number 10, which is the first reading of ordinance 202065. Madam Clerk, would you please read this?
An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2021, for the City of Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have not received the estimated 2020 equalized assessed value at this time, but based on the final 2019 equalized assessed value and last year's estimated tax rate for comparisons, the tax levy to be paid in 2021 would be $2,535,000. The house value of $100,000 would see no increase in their city portion of their property tax bill as Alderman McClanahan stated, unless there was some change in their assessed value. The seized tax levy has been paying for the pension obligations in the past. This year, I placed the entire levy in the corporate account. This gives the seed some flexibility to apply to the pension obligation bond debt service, as well as maybe use for any other purposes that we need.
Questions or concerns, council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman McClanahan.
Thank you. Manager Bukas, we're getting kind of late in the game. Have we gotten any indication as to when the, what the county expects to have some figures for us?
Last year, we didn't get them until November 19.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman McClanahan.
I'd make a motion to move this forward.
All right, we have a motion made by Alderman McClanahan, seconded by Alderman Parker to move ordinance 202065 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 11 is the first reading of ordinance 202066. Madam Clerk, would you please read this for the record?
An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1 and ending December 31, 2021, for the public library of the City of Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. The library is presently capped at what they can levy, and so they're levying the same amount as they did these past year, past few years. And again, somebody with a $100,000 home would basically see a small decrease in their library portion of their tax bill.
Discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman McClanahan.
Thank you. As Manager Bukas indicated, they're, they can't change their levy in regards to anything additional on it. I'd make a motion to move forward.
Second that.
Thank you. We have a motion made by Alderman McClanahan, seconded by Alderman Burberry to move ordinance 202066 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 12 is a motion to abate all tax, all real estate tax levy for repayment of the general obligation bond. Manager Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a number of ordinances that we have up for adoption tonight. We'd like to do it all in one motion. As in the past, the city council has abated these tax levies because we've had money set aside to pay for these obligations. The first one being the 2013 A bond, that's $85,995, that's been abated. Funds from the Fire Capital Improvement Fund are used to pay for that bond. The 2014 A bond is over $766,000, and that's coming out of the sewer fund. The 2014 B bond is about $235,000, and that again is coming out of the sewer fund. The bond 2015 A is coming out of various funds. It's just under $100,000. The sewer fund's paying about 76% of that. The storm sewer's paying 5%, the general fund about 13%, and downtown TIF about 3%. The 2016 bond is, was used for the new city hall, and that's $182,000. That's all coming out of the general fund. The 2018 bond was a bond that we used for the downtown reviving loan fund program. That's $94,000. That's coming out of the downtown TIF. The 2019 A bond was used for our street improvement program that we initiated. Those funds are coming out of Fund 18, which is the street improvement fund, and that's $237,000. And then this year, we just, in 2020, we adopted a bond that's coming out of the general fund and actually be coming out of part of our property taxes and other funds to pay it. It's all coming out of the general fund, and that's our buyer and police pension bond payment.
Manager Bukas, just for clarification, did you, you made a comment of asking for adoption, or were you just looking for this to be moved forward?
I'm sorry, move it forward.
Okay, thank you.
We have, we have time.
Questions, council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Just for protocol, don't we normally have the city clerk read all these into record? I think that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Is it acceptable just to read the years rather than all of the verbiage? Can I just list the years, or you want all the whole thing?
Probably because they're a different series.
Okay.
There for the year, so.
An ordinance to abate the 2020 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bond, Series 2013A. Ordinance 202068, an ordinance to abate the 2020 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bond, Series 2014A. Ordinance 201969, that is not right. That's 202069. An ordinance to abate the 2020 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bond, Series 2014B. Ordinance 202070, an ordinance to abate the 2020 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligations bond, Series 2015A. Ordinance 202071, an ordinance to abate the 2020 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bond, Series 2016. Ordinance 202072, an ordinance to abate the 2020 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bond, Series 2018. Ordinance 202073, an ordinance to abate the 2020 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bond, Series 2019A. And 202074, an ordinance to abate the 2020 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bond, Series 2020.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to move all those that were just read for the public. I would like to make a motion to move those forward. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Parker to move those ordinances from 67 to 74 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 13 is the first reading of ordinance 202075. Madam Clerk, would you please read this?
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Freeport pertaining to the definition of meeting halls in the zoning code, which amends Section 1240.06 definitions.
Thank you. Director Heinz.
Thank you. So as we've discussed at a few meetings over the past month or so, we don't have a definition in the codified ordinances for meeting halls. However, it's listed as a permitted use in B2-1 and a special use in B1-1. So the tax amendment would add the following definition of meeting hall to 1240.06 of the code. So any business, facility, room, or portion thereof which is regularly rented, leased, donated, or otherwise need available to any person or entity other than the owner or occupant thereof of the public property fund. The term "meeting hall" shall include, not limited to, all rental halls, banquet rooms, conference centers, social clubs, or other similar locations, where spaces regularly made available for non-residential use by persons who are not the owners or less than subject. So after receiving a special use application for meeting hall, we, the staff was concerned that there is no definition or any regulation over, over meeting halls. And given the recent approval of the regulation for business license for meeting halls and a license for bring your own bottle facilities alleviated concerns that staff has grounding oversight of meeting halls, we've added this definition of meeting hall to our zoning code to align with the meeting hall business license definition. We'll just walk through and then the approval of this tax amendment to add this definition to our zoning code. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 12 and recommended approval by a vote of 7 to 0. And the zoning board of appeals discussed this on November 5 and recommended approval by a vote of 4 to 0. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Director Heinz.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Motion to move forward.
Second.
So we have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross to move ordinance 202075 onto the next regularly scheduled meeting, unless there's something that the council would like for further discussion? Move on to item number 14, which is the adoption of Resolution 202062.
Resolution authorizing and approving agreement for electric energy contract.
Thank you. Director Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is follow up from the committee of the whole. It's time to renew the electrical supply contract for water and wastewater. The most recent bid table arrived today, and it shows direct energy has the lowest, is the lowest apparent bidder. Staff is recommending that the council approve the lowest bidder, and we can go ahead and get this agreement signed and sent off tomorrow. Do you have any questions at this time?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross to adopt Resolution 202062. Any further discussion, council? Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McClanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Mysick.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you, Director Boyer.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is the adoption of Resolution 202063. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the City of Freeport authorizing and approving an agreement with locality media doing business as first due size up for pre-incident planning and fire inspection software.
Chief Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I presented information on this subject matter at the Committee of the Whole meeting last week. Nothing has changed from that particular presentation. I would like to entertain any questions from the Council.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you. Chief Liggett, how many tablets will you need? And once this is, if this passes, who will enter all this information into the tablets when you go through these?
Thank you, Alderman. There will be one tablet for each response vehicle. And the lieutenants and firefighters on the assigned apparatus would be the ones entering the information during the pre-planned visit and/or fire inspection. The company that we're contracting with, locality media, has developed software, background software that will call information from the internet to populate many of the fields that are currently available to us through government entities, and information that's available to us through Google Earth and Google Maps. So there's tons of information that's already available out there that will be available to us as soon as we turn the computer on.
Follow-up, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Chief Liggett, is the training included in the costs of these programs? The initial subscription cost of the software is $11,205. Is the training for our firemen and our people that would implement this, is that included in some of these costs?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And one more question, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Reading through your notes here, which by the way, I really enjoyed. You, you gave us a lot of information. Does this program hopefully will be paid for with a reimbursement through CARES Act in the first year? If it is not paid for through CARES, I see that it would become part of the IT budget. If so, is that budgeted in, in completion at this time?
This, there is some extra funds that are available in the, every year for incidental purchases that need to occur. Those types of purchases are taken care of with an appropriation amendment and resolution at the end of the year. I'd have to give it to Director Richter for more details on how that's accomplished.
The funds would come out of the general fund if, if need be. And if we have to, we could always look at Fund 32, the Fire Capital Improvement Fund. But what we're doing, any future work would be coming, any future costs we are budgeting in the IT department.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, unless there's no further discussion, we have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Busker for the adoption of Resolution 202063. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Mysick.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 16 is the adoption of Resolution 202065. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the City of Freeport committing to a 25% match from general funds of the city with regards to a building resilient infrastructure and communities or brick grant.
Thank you. Director Heinz.
Thank you. So we're working in conjunction with the Illinois Emergency Management Agency to submit an application for what is called the BRIC grant in short, for an acquisition and demolition project in the floodway east of the Pecan River. The program is funded by FEMA through IEMA. And applicants, which IEMA is the applicant, they can receive up to $600,000 for eligible sub-applicant projects. The city is a sub-applicant and acquisition and demolition are included in those eligible projects. And so again, sub-applicants would be required to provide a 25% match. We would be expected, the maximum amount of this would be $200,000. And in our pre-application, we estimated that our match would be about $189,900.900, in which case we would receive $569,700 from IEMA. The grant program is similar to pre-disaster mitigation in that we can be reimbursed for the acquisition and demolition of structures and relocation costs for residents in a floodway. The goal is to help residents relocate to a safe and dry space and to remove any structures and allow the area to revert back to its natural status of what land, just the same as the pre-disaster mitigation grant. We plan to prioritize occupied residential structures and will include businesses and other structures and vacant lots as alternates, given that those, the occupied residential residents don't want to sell their properties or choose not to participate. The, the official application deadline is January 29th of 2021. However, we'll be submitting a draft application on November 20th, this Friday, and working with IEMA over the next few months to make any improvements to the grant application before the, the official deadline. And as a, the pre-disaster mitigation grant will ultimately receive pre-award status if we get to that point by June of 2021. And afterwards, we'll go through further, further review and answer requests for information from FEMA. The overall length of the, the process isn't known at this point. It depends on the complexity of the project and, and questions or clarify the details. So in order to submit the application, we do need confirmation that we will provide a 25% match for the BRIC grant. So staff has, we recommend the authorization of the 25% match from the general fund. Can I give you any questions?
Question, Your Honor?
Alderman Burberry.
Thank you. Director Heinz, with the funds from FEMA and IEMA in our match, approximately how many residences or structures would we be able to acquire and develop, should I ask you?
So I, I brought up our estimate, I'm excuse you, sorry for not including that number in this. I brought up our estimate, match and the estimate, estimate that we thought we might receive from FEMA. That includes about 30, 30 occupied residential structures. And we, we plan on including as many, as many alternate properties as, people want to participate. The total number that we estimate that we would get, or the maximum I think that we, we would get for alternate properties would be over 100. There, there are still quite a few, most of vacant lots that, that are still privately owned. But there, there are quite a few left.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. This is in line with other grants, as you indicated. And furthermore, it's in line with the goals of providing financially feasible ways for residents to get out of the floodways. It seems like it'd be very complimentary, the pre-disaster mitigation grant, if we are successful on it. And, and even if we were not, as a standalone, again, it advances what I think are some important goals that were, had, have been established. So I would make a motion to adopt the Resolution 2020 hyphen 65.
Second.
If there's no further discussion, we have a motion made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Mysick.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 17 is the adoption of Resolution 202066. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the City of Freeport approving the city's property, general liability, and workers' compensation insurance policies with Arthur J. Gallagher.
Manager Bukas.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's property, workers' comp and liability insurance is due to expire at the end of, end of December, December 31st. Staff requests proposals from our current carrier, broker, A.J. Gallagher and Company, and the Illinois Municipal League's Risk Management Association, who used to provide a service. We opened, we opened the proposal, well, actually, we had them come in and give their presentations. And Gallagher, in 2020, we paid them $631,868 in premiums. And their proposal for next year is $670,688. It's about a 6% increase. The same, the same type of service or same type of program that Gallagher offered, the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association's fees came in at $697,908, or about $27,240 higher. The IML, IMA also had an alternative that they called Min-Max. Staff does not believe that that would be beneficial to us since, even though the initial lower part of the premium would be less than we're paying now, there's the possibility that we could pay up to $847,600 for the premium if we have a bad, bad risk. And therefore, staff's recommendation that we accept the proposal from Gallagher, Arthur J. Gallagher and Company in the amount of $670,688.
Questions, Council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brasshaw.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of a, of Resolution R-2020-66.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Parker. Unless there's any further discussion, Council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Burberry.
Alderman McLanathan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman McLanathan.
All right, thank you. Some of us on the Council have been in situations before where we've been on those Min-Max policies and it made the budgeting life kind of difficult. I mean, particularly when we're looking at a Min-Max, when you take into consideration the prior act fees to switch, the, the potential gain on here is very minimal and the maximum exposure is significantly higher. I appreciate the prior change to Gallagher and I think this is certainly in our financial best interest, so I'd be in support of it.
Anything else, Council? Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll for the adoption?
Burberry.
Aye.
Borneman.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Mysick.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to reports for department heads. Finance?
I have no report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Community Development?
Thank you. I just wanted to, to bring up the, the pre-disaster mitigate, mitigation grants and where we're at in the process with that since, since I was talking about the, the BRIC grant tonight. So last week, we submitted a response to IEMA requesting, after they requested additional information on our pre-disaster mitigation grant application. Most of the questions were regarding property information, like confirming latitude and longitude and uploading some missing photos, the very many details in the application. And right now, we're working with a group called CDM Smith, and they are hired by FEMA to complete an environmental justice review. So as part of this review, they're going to host a telephone town hall, and that's anticipated to be held Wednesday, December 9th at 4:00 p.m. Once they confirm that information and the, the phone number to call for that town hall meeting or link to join into, we'll be posting that on, on our website, Facebook, and publishing it for, for people to see and to hear about. And this group, CDM Smith, will also be sending out mailings to, to all the residents that are living in the floodway or who own property in the floodway, for anyone who, who could potentially be affected by this program. And as, as part of this process too, we did learn that we should be expecting to, to know the award status of the grant by spring of 2021. We haven't had an official date, so to say, as we've been working through this. So, you know, we, we just figured that out today, but I think that's pretty good.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Next is Public Works.
I just have one thing, Your Honor. The leaf program continues to go smoothly. At this point, we've removed about 250 loads. That represents 650 to 700 tons of leaves from the city. So we're going strong. Hopefully, the majority of the work will be complete this week and what we have left in November. But we'll continue to run a trailing crew for any kind of stragglers. But we'll be boxing this up at our first major event. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Director, did you say approximately 250 loads?
Yeah.
And do you have any idea where that stands in comparison to previous years?
I, I don't know that yet. Haven't had an opportunity to compare. But I think it's pretty substantial.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And Fire Department?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that Lieutenant Mike McKenna is going to be retiring this week on his last full 24-hour shift is the 17th. And we will be hosting his flag ceremony out of doors at Central Fire Station at 8:00 a.m. on the 18th. Like to invite everyone to attend and honor Mike and his service. He's 30-plus years on the department. He's been the first and only emergency medical services coordinator for the department. And he's worked as a firefighter, paramedic, lieutenant, and is an incredible asset to the department. And we'd like to have you there to help honor him. Also, we assisted the Shannon Fire Department last Friday with a fire, a grain dryer fire. There were several fire departments there to assist and the operation went safely and no one was hurt. We have, I also have appointed Adam Holes, firefighter Adam Holes, to the position of emergency medical services coordinator pending Mike McKenna's retirement. That's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you, Chief. Police?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I need to report is we had a little hiccup with our recruits that are in the, the academy. They were sent home last week. There was a positive COVID test in their, in their group, so they sent them home to separate all the, the class. Hopefully, they're back in class next week. That's the, the intent and it shouldn't delay the graduation of the, of the recruits that are down there.
IT, did you have anything this evening? Thank you. Library?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Miller. I just wanted to give an update that the library is still open. We're doing nine to six, Monday through Friday, 10 to three on Saturday. We do have a special board meeting on Wednesday to discuss altering any of the services that we're offering to possibly change to curbside service. that we're offering to possibly change to curbside service and appointments to use the computers. And we'll just keep you updated on what we decide and what comes down from the governor in the next week or two. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Director. Then we will move on to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only item I'd like to mention tonight is that we will conduct a public hearing on our appropriation ordinance on Monday, December seventh, at five forty-five before the start of the regular city council meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. For my report, I'd just like to remind everyone that the Salvation Army is looking for volunteers this season, for ringers. You can do that in three ways, as an individual, you can do that as a group, or they're also doing it as virtual, which you would be soliciting donations from family and friends to help out the Salvation Army. Also, a reminder that the City Hall is open by appointments only. So next Thursday is Thanksgiving, so there are no appointments being taken for Thursday or Friday. First, the hall will be closed. So I would just like to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. We will move on to council announcements. Alderman Burberry.
Nothing to this time, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bornnaman.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things for me tonight. I have a question for Manager Bukis. And this is something we touched base on. Obviously, as I mentioned earlier, I'm looking to try to provide as much relief to bars and restaurants, small businesses, as we can right now, because I'm anticipating another shutdown. So one of the things I was wondering about is, I'm aware that our liquor license insurance, liquor liability insurance minimum in the City of Freeport is much higher than the state minimum. And I guess my question is, and I'm sorry to probably catch you off guard on this, but do you know where our standard sits among others, other municipalities in the area, or just as a state average?
No, I do not.
Is that something that you'd be able to update us with at the next Committee of the Whole meeting?
Next Committee of the Whole meeting, possibly.
Okay. And just the thinking there is, I think every penny counts when it comes to these businesses, and especially the ones that are following the guidelines and that are shut down right now. And I'm just trying to provide, find out options to make things easier for them, because I know right now it's difficult. With that being said, I think it's important to note that the, how unfair it is to the businesses that are complying with the shutdown or the restricted guidelines right now set forth by the governor. Those businesses are, the ones that are complying. Then you have ones that just are openly not following the rules. And at the end of the day, the business that's going to go out of business is the one that's following the rules. I don't know what role the city plays in this, but I just recall us passing a resolution earlier this year. It was one I was against. I'm not here to point fingers. It was well-intentioned. But right now, we passed that resolution, and I think it's pretty obvious there's businesses that aren't following the governor's order, and they didn't, aren't following the resolution. I just wonder, you know, what was the purpose of that resolution? If it serves no, provides us with no enforcement whatsoever? And again, I'm not here to point fingers. I'm here because there's another shutdown probably in the works. I think it's important for us to plan for it. At least we'll have some heads up this time. That's why I presented the idea of helping out the liquor license, reducing that. But I was reading the resolution, because I had a conversation with somebody who called me today, a resident who was concerned. And our numbers are just so much worse than what they were then, that I really need, a change needs to be made. I don't know what that change really is. I don't know if it's the city's role, or if it's the governor's, the state police, the county, Illinois Department of Public Health. But it deserves attention. And as leaders in the community, I mean, we need to give it the attention. There's, our numbers in this, in this community, specifically just our county, not the whole region, but in general, are up, and they're to a dangerous level. So I'd just like to encourage people to, you know, get takeout. Go to businesses that are following the rules. I'm not here to bash businesses or recommend ones over others, but do what you can to help. But overall, please, to the public, wear your mask, wash your hands, maintain social distance. And it's going to be harder than ever now with the holidays coming up. And the frustrating thing is, all the sacrifices that we did, that we asked of people earlier in the year when this shutdown was in full force, are really just being, you know, with all those sacrifices were put in place are being wasted with the more people who just fail to follow the rules, such as following masks or wearing masks, doing the simple things now. So just hopeful that people keep that in mind. Work together, do your part, enjoy your holidays, but just be safe about it. Think about it. This is unprecedented times, and sometimes that calls for sacrifices or unprecedented holiday celebrations. So just keep that in mind, and, you know, happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McLanathan?
Thank you. I'd also just briefly note, the last forty-five days, obviously in our community, seen a drastic shift. You know, we've gone from, on average, single digits to low teens, up to, for the last two weeks, where our average, I haven't calculated the last two days in, but as of the end of last week, we were averaging about forty-six and a half positive cases a day over that two-week period. In that, in that last forty-five days, we've either doubled or almost doubled the amount of positive cases and more than doubled the deaths since the first seven months that we had prior to that. So obviously, you see a pattern and a trend. I would just encourage individuals to listen to the, to extent feasible, listen to the recommendations that are out there. And, I mean, obviously, it's a common refrain, we hear it all the time, you know, wash your hands, keep your social distance, if you can't, keep six feet distant, you know, wear your mask in regards to that. Just, and obviously, again, the holidays are coming up too, so it's an important time for all of us. It wasn't as significant, obviously, in March, April, May in this community, but obviously, in the last forty-five days, it's having a much more significant impact. So please, be considerate for not only your health, but also looking out for your loved ones, your colleagues, and things of that nature as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ross?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Busker?
Nothing further than that.
Thank you. Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mysick?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. That leaves us with item number twenty-two, which is public comments. Are there any public comments this evening? Then we'll move on to item number twenty-three. Nope, we are, twenty-three is all, is not on the agenda. So we will move on to item number twenty-four, which is a German, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Burberry.
Aye.
Bornnaman.
Aye, and go Bears.
McLanathan.
Simply aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Mysick.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Have a good evening.